Welcome to the in camera podcast with Alvin Tejo. The big city podcast about big city issues and big city solutions. We often see photos and videos on social media about our political leaders. But how aware are we really of what happens behind closed doors? This week I'm joined by Ward nine counselor Martin Reed, right here in Mississauga. Martin and I share a few unique things. Well, we were both elected together two years ago. We are just two of the four counselors of color ever elected to lead Mississauga. In our conversation, we reflect on what it's like being the rookies on council. We also discuss the responsibility of representing our residents, not just as counselors, but also as role models for communities that haven't seen themselves reflected in our leadership. I had a much more traditional route here. I was a former political staffer who eventually decided to put his name on a ballot. Martin forged his own unique way to counsel, starting with a background in social work, wellness and fitness. He was encouraged by his neighbors and a gentle shove from the previous counselor to run. Mississauga is changing and conversations like these help us to see where we've been, where we are and where we need to go. If you have any suggestions or questions for the show, feel free to email me at alvin.tejaw@mississauga.ca. And now my conversation with counselor. Well, welcome. It's the in camera podcast with Alvin Tejo. Which, you know, I really came up with because I thought it would be a nice way to tell people that we're going to have conversations that, you know, are kind of behind the scenes in camera.
Right.
But today, really happy to have one of my colleagues, one of my good friends, Martin Reed, also a city counselor here in Mississauga. We got elected at the same time and it's been a journey.
It has, man, like this is used to be your office, man. Like this is a complete, you see the cameras off scene here, like it's, it's pretty crazy. You've done a good job with this, man, like we can.
Yeah, we got a good team.
Yeah.
It's a, it was a fun thing we wanted to do. Actually, I've been thinking about doing this. I remember you and I were working out, we were talking about, hey, we should do like a chat, a podcast. I know you do some Facebook lives.
Facebook lives, IG lives.
And I've jumped in a couple of those.
Yeah.
It's just kind of fun to have that kind of.
It's funny, fun fact, I think if I look back on it, my IG lives already actually got me elected. If you do, if you draw a connection between like what I was doing in the fitness world and then doing these IG lives and then Pat Sado recognizing that and connecting me to like, there's a whole origin story that comes back to IG live and me actually getting enough notoriety for people to recognize what I'm doing and then to take that to like next door app and all these different places.
Yeah, so you gotta put yourself out there.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I really wanted to talk to you in this format because I think you have a really unique path, journey into politics, into municipal government. I don't want to say not traditional, but it's not traditional. It's not traditional and you know, the fact that you and I were both elected in the same year, in the same election and were like 50% of every minority who's ever been elected in the city of Mississauga.
Yes.
You know, some people sort of like, it's a bit of a changing of the guard. But you know, my, I would say my path is much more traditional. I've worked in government for a long time, worked in politics. What got you into this? What got you interested? How did you get here?
Community action, you know, and that was it. And actually, when we got elected, I didn't even really know much about you. I think I've seen you like just in other kind of polished political arenas a little bit. But someone said that, that Alvin Tejo, I remember him as a kid and he wanted to be prime minister when he was like a little kid. So like some older adult was telling me that your whole background story, like this is something you've been like, this is in the fabric of your being from day one. Yeah, exactly. And then finally you got all these degrees and like your walls are doing, or you know, adorned with all these like Queens University and is that Harvard?
That's Harvard.
That's Harvard. Humbly speaking, it's Harvard.
Yeah.
Yeah, whereas for me, like I actually have a social work backgrounds, have a fitness background that came off my social work background, but I've always lived in the same area and always had a passion for my community. And if you stop and think about like Pat Sado's kind of origin story too, it was the same thing.
Your predecessor.
My predecessor. Yeah, yeah, so Pat Sado was a counselor for 31 years, like, and she was like a house mom involved with like, you know, school council and she was writing a newspaper article or something like that. And Pat's, and then Hazel was like, hey, you should run for council. She's like, I think I will. You know, so fast forward like 30 years, I'm sitting in a room with like these intimidating, like smart black people in this, you know, mayor's caucus and they're like, you know, Pat's retiring, you should run. I'm like, I think I will. And here I am.
How was your first conversation with Pat?
Well, when I was working at the dam 20 years before, I used to see her all the time.
And the dam's a shelter agency.
You're doing a good job of filling in the backstories, man.
Trying to make sure everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the dam is a drop in center in Medaville originally for young people. And as you know, at the region right now, we're talking a lot about, you know, with this metamorphosis and how, you know, we aren't getting enough funding. Originally when the dam started, it was to stop the flow of young people into the downtown core. There was no funding that was coming to Mississauga, so we were actually trying to do work upstream and stopping kids from getting, so I spent a ton of time there. Pat Sado would come in all the time when we were in financial streets and she'd be like, I got you a check, you know, or like I found you a space. And I was like, man, I, I want that job one day, right? Where she's actually making a difference, a tangible difference in the community that I care about. And she just never quit, right? She was there for 30 years, so the whole time I was there, she would show up and then she would be at, you know, our silent auction and then she'd be at our Christmas party and then she would present the check or she'd come through when we're in dire streets. And I loved that community action and I really am passionate about like that kind of frontline politics, municipal politics. And you and I, we've talked about this offline so much, like I have a disdain for party politics. Like I am nonpartisan, can't stand it, don't talk to me about it. But I like making a difference in my community and that's the thing that I saw she was doing.
Right.
So when the opportunity came for me to, to do that, I just reached back out to her and just asked her, said like flat out, like I heard you're retiring, I've heard that you wanna, you know, help anyone who's interested. I'm interested.
You had a fascinating race. Not a lot of seats opened up in Mississauga. We just celebrated our 50th anniversary and I think in the history of the city, only six incumbents had ever lost.
Yes.
And we'll kind of get through some of those stories because some of them are interesting. But you know, one of them was Pat Sado, who, who you replaced, who had been there for a really long time. I also replaced a Pat, it was Pat Mullin, who was there on a, on a short period of time. She was counselor for eight months, but she was appointed by council to replace Karen Rass.
Yes.
And the reason she replaced Karen Rass was because she was the previous counselor for 20 plus years. I think she finally hit 30 years because of her extra eight months.
Yes.
But Karen Rass was there for about eight months, eight years. And the reason she resigned was because there was another counselor.
Yes.
Down the hallway who I guess allegedly, since we can't say it was a hundred percent proven in court, but we've seen videos, was keying her car several times over a year.
Right.
And then she said, I need to quit, I can't take this harassment. And then we found something interesting out that as counselors, we're not employees. We're, we're like board members, so we don't, we're not protected by the employment standards act. The city doesn't have a duty of care to us to make sure that we live or work in a safe environment, which we thought was interesting.
Except for the whole like human rights thing and the respectful workplace piece and like, yeah.
So like they talk about that kind of stuff, but it doesn't necessarily apply to us.
Right.
And then just sort of touching on that piece of who else was like lost. So Ron Starr was the one who was accused of doing it. And one of our other colleagues, Joe Horneck, was the one who beat him.
Right.
That was, I think the sixth person whoever had, had lost before. And the one before that was Cliff Giles, who was the first person of color ever elected in Mississauga.
Yes.
But there's kind of an asterisk to that story. I don't know if you want to get into it or you want me to do it.
Well, you can get into it. It's an, it's another allegedly story, but I think that he actually was convicted and stuff. And I've said this before too, man, like it's, it's tough being the first black person in 20 years and the only black counselor for the region of Peel. You walk into a room and people are like, hey, congratulations, remember Cliff Giles? Don't do what he did. And you're like, okay, thanks, what about congratulations? Like just like, just don't mess it up for us.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, he got, he had some issues around, I think some corruption, some bribery, things like that. And he actually ran, I think while he was.
Yes.
Being convicted. And then that was one of the times he lost. But there's a lot of sort of weight there and I think a lot of people don't realize that or appreciate that, that you are who you are, you can't, you can't change the way you look, can't change your upbringing. And you were part of the Black Caucus.
Yes.
In Mississauga, which was like an advisory group for the mayor.
Right.
Who was trying to, you know, help causes, help black people in the community. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
It was interesting, you know, everyone has their superpower. And the people that were in that room were finance, tech, education, advocacy, cultural, business. And they all had a lens that they brought to it and you know, and as a result of that, and even a consultant, Claudia McCoy, who was the consultant, kind of steering the ship on this whole thing. It was interesting to see so many brilliant black people with different intelligences, if I could say it that way. And it took me a minute to find out what my intelligence was in that room or where I fit. And there was many days where I felt intimidated being in that room with them because they were smart, affluent, intelligent, connected and me. Right? And so you kind of forget like what, what my superpower is in that room. As I quickly, you know, discovered that and where I fit, my lens, my input, my percept, my perception of things. But it was interesting. It was a really, really interesting place to be because you don't in everyday life, see people that look like you that are everything I just said a minute ago.
Yeah, you know, so my wife Rebecca and I have this conversation a lot where we talk about this, like imposter syndrome, inferiority complex a little bit. We talked about it sort of in the context of women, but I also see it in the context of minorities as well. Who sort of see like you, we are not the traditional looking people that you expect to be politicians.
Right.
And so you find it harder for yourself to put yourself in positions where you could be successful or where you could have influence or where you can sort of try to rise up.
Yes.
Right? And so my wife, every time we talk about, you know, oh, should I apply for this job? Or maybe I'm not qualified. And I was talking to the other, someone else the other day and they said, they have a T-shirt that says, have the confidence of a mediocre white man.
Yes.
Because they, not they, but like it, it feels like there's a lot of people in society who've been around, who just have this like natural confidence. That's because they see themselves in reflected in their leadership.
Right.
Right? And they've seen people like them.
Yes.
Get to these positions.
It's normalized.
It's normalized.
Absolutely.
But when we were the first one through the door, like I'm the first Asian, East Asian, Southeast Asian.
Yes.
You know, elected in Mississauga on, on city council. And you know, that I feel that on occasion, right? When it comes up and where, where other people come talk to me. You know, one of the, one of the janitors in the building. And after I got elected, he stopped me and he was like, I don't think you know this, but you know, I support you, blah, 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 I want to shake your hand, congratulations, you're the first one of us.
Yes.
Right? And he saw himself.
Do you feel the, do you feel the weight of that at times? Okay. And what does that weight feel like?
You, you don't want to let them down.
Okay.
Right? There's, it's a pressure that's kind of like wanting to make sure that you can perform, wanting to make sure that you don't screw up, that, that you make them proud, right? It's like, you know that they're watching.
Yes.
Yeah. Like your people, your kind that they're watching and they, and they, they want you to succeed and they want, they want to be behind you, but at the same time, you don't want to let them down.
Are there times when you feel like you, you want to be proactive with it? Like you're trying to like anticipate what their next step will be. So you could be, look, I was there or look, I went to that event or look, I advocated for you. Or is it after the fact, like, why weren't you there? Or like, let's wait to see what he says on this topic.
Yeah, sometimes I think it depends on the issue. It feels like you don't want to just talk about it, the issue, because it's a minority issue that you're related to, right? And I'm like, I don't want to just be that, right? I have opinions and I want to make progress on a whole bunch of other things. But at the same time, sometimes when there are big issues around your community, your cultural community, you have to be the one to stand up for them because no one else will.
Cause no one else will.
Right? And you want to give them that aspiration and to show them that you can do the job and then to get more of them interested in doing it too. Like you can do it too, because look, I did it.
Exactly.
And I did it because we had a network together, we could help each other.
Right? So broad strokes, that's kind of how I feel when it comes to matters with policing. Where we look at a police budget and if they said 1% increase, I would get emails from the black community saying, we're still disproportionately represented in arrests, use of force, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Don't give them a dollar.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
But then at the same time, I talked to parents, black families or whoever in the community. And they're like, you know, we really need the police back in the schools again. Like this is getting out of control, there's no visibility to that. But the black community is the same one who cried foul when they were weaponizing, when your principals were weaponizing police officers against the black community. And then the police had to admit that, you know, there was some shortcomings there. Therefore, we're pulling out until you invite us back in. So now I'm, I'm now bridging the black community with the police community where I think the police are doing a good job. And I want to say, these are opportunities to rewrite the script. Whereas the black community is in my ear saying, you know, you don't side with them too much because we're still overrepresented over here.
I remember having this exact conversation with the chief. After we got elected, we went through all these briefings, right? And every department sort of told us, this is what we do, this is how you interact with us. And we had one with the chief at, at the headquarters and he was talking about, you know, trying to be the most progressive, innovative, you know, police force in the galaxy.
Yes.
Right? Inclusive. And I was like, you know, Nish, that's great. But that's not the lived experience of people I know. Right? Growing up in the city, you know, we kind of knew Peel Police is kind of racist. They kind of did a whole bunch of things. They were carding, they were the ones who were adamant when people around the province were trying to get rid of carding, that it was a tool that they needed to keep.
Yes.
And they were like on the forefront of stopping, you know, removing carding. And there, there was a case, I think 30 years ago where Peel Police were like basically accused of wrongfully killing a young black man.
Yeah, the Ray Lawson one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why we talked to chief, deputy chief Mark Andrews about it. And he was like, you know what, honestly, I gotta tell you the story that that's why I joined the police force. As, as, as a young black man himself.
Yeah.
Right? And to say like, no one looks like me who's here. And that's why it's so important.
Yeah.
But I told the chief when we were talking about this, I'm like, it's great that that's your position right now. But to build that trust takes time.
Right.
A lot of time.
Yes.
And to lose it takes nothing.
Seconds.
Like one wrong step.
Yep.
You've lost it.
Right.
And anyone who's had that lift experience of that, of the opposite.
Yes.
Is going to take even longer to bring around.
Yes.
So, you know, when we were debating the budget, one of the questions I had was, what are we doing upstream? How, to what your point earlier, how do we get to people before they get into the position where they might be in trouble with the police?
Yes.
Right?
And you know, and my, my answer to that is, well, anticipating his answer to that, he'll say, well, we, we've spent, he would say they spent money on the division mobilization unit, DMU, CSER, all those different things. So he's one of the first chiefs to spend that much energy, money, resources on upstream work.
Right.
Right? Because if it came out to just counselors, we would just want more arrests out there. Right? So he has the courage to put money towards those things. And recognizing that, there's a lot of officers, frontline officers like Jerome, that I just saw at this, this youth hub, for example, Peter Grant, some of those officers that, you know, are doing that frontline work. They're not, you know, they're not front office brass, but they're the guys on the, do the, do, doing the work on the front lines. I give them all kinds of time.
Yeah.
Like they have my phone number, they're doing a youth event, they're doing the Yippee events, they're doing all those different events, I'm there. Like so on the backend, I'm trying to reinforce what Nish is trying to do on the frontend. Because I recognize that like, yeah, we have to supplement it or else it is like, we're just waiting for him to fail. I'm not going to sit back and wait for him to fail.
No, we gotta have their back, right? He's doing the right thing.
Yes.
He's doing the right thing. It's been challenging with our communities who, you know, want the resources to just arrest people, you know, do all these things. I mean, there's been some terrible things happening, people getting carjacked.
Yeah.
People getting broken into, one of my neighbors the other day just, you know, was held at gunpoint.
Yeah, you said that, man, that's crazy.
Like that's awful. And the story is going around the neighborhood and people are scared.
Right.
Right? But we can't just focus on the downstream effects of where we are right now in society.
No.
Right? We gotta put all the resources we can into the upstream, into prevention.
Yep.
Into dealing with people who are at risk. And I think you and I have brought a lot of that perspective and that lens.
Yes.
To, to back Nish and everyone else at the region who's trying to introduce some of these programs.
For sure. And I think my, my background in social work, we started there and kind of went off on those different tangents. But I think that's where my background in social work comes into play because I recognize that, you know, intervention is almost futile. It has to be prevention at some point. So you're less spend the energy there. And, and you'll see like I lean into the work at the region like big time. Because I feel like that's where we're really moving the needle with the human services and, and things. So that, that meeting we had before, you know, budget, when we have those kind of meetings with health services, human services and talk about the community safety, wellbeing framework and health systems integration committee, that's where I feel the real work's being done. And that works even informing the police too, right? Cause like they're all combined on the community safety and wellbeing framework. So the stuff we're doing in cities fantastic. But I think sometimes, you know, you might want to edit this afterwards, but I think sometimes we smile and nod through the region budget.
Yeah, in the past, absolutely.
In the past.
In the past, absolutely. I think people have done that. I think that was part of the argument as to why to get rid of the region.
Yes.
It's because it, it, it costs half of the tax increase that we have to do every year. And most counselors over time have paid less attention to it.
Say less, say less.
Then, then they probably should have.
Yeah.
Right? And so they kind of get a pass on certain things, less accountability. But now, you know, they've been under the microscope for the last couple of years with regional dissolution, with the review. Now we're sort of starting to see certain services getting downloaded, which I think is good. At the end of the day, you know, we're talking about a lot of important programs that need to run, but we also need to run a budget that is reasonable for people to be able to absorb.
Yeah.
We're talking about an affordability crisis that's pushing people out to the edge.
Right.
It's making them more desperate.
Right.
We can't also be the cause of it while we're trying to also be the solution.
True.
Right? And while we increase taxes, like 10% is too much, right? When we start talking about these things. So you gotta find that balance and I think that's one of the hardest parts about this job.
Yeah, exactly. And then I feel like we, we make these tough decisions and then I feel the onus on me as a counselor to give people value for their money. And then I'm like redoubling my efforts and like being at more community events and like being the one picking up trash in the area and stuff like, look, we're working hard for your dollar. You know, I feel like that's part of it too, right? Cause I, value for money.
Yeah.
You know, is important. So, you know, residents get it when they see the value for it and they really don't get it when they don't see that value.
Well, there are so many things that I like to equate to, you know, that this order of government is the most important for people's lives.
Yes.
Right? If the federal government disappeared tomorrow, I don't know how long it would take for you to notice, but it might be months.
Right.
Right? If you didn't get your passport or whatever, you're working for something else like that. The provincial government, you know, that could take a while too. You might have some issues with your hospitals or with your schools. But at the city level, like tomorrow, garbage didn't get picked up, if the leaves weren't, you know, if no one entered 911.
Right.
Couldn't get into your community center, you'd notice right away.
Yeah.
Or so there's huge value in what we do as municipalities, but it seems to fall back on people's priority list because it's one of those things that they just assume is always going to work.
Right.
Right? And well, it's there, it's just going to be there on time and all, all the time.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, you talk to people in my neighborhood and they still think that Pat Sado's a counselor. You know, like it's such a low voter turnout that people don't even know who, they would even ask if something went wrong. They didn't get a parking ticket and they get mad and then they call the city, but they still, they kind of bypass me still, right? So I feel like we need to continue to have that connection. I'm changing gears a little bit. We're at two years.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations, man. How you feeling? Do you feel like you got your feet on you? You feel like you're in a groove?
Yeah, you know, it takes, it takes a while to understand and learn everything.
Yeah.
And I'm still learning, I'm still learning every day.
Yep.
I don't think you can ever fully grasp everything that we do and everyone who works in this place. But I think people are genuinely here for the right reasons.
Yes.
And they, they want to make lives better, staff are great, they want to help people. And I think there's just this disconnect that I really want to work on. I really want to work on my residents understanding, you know, the value the city provides, the services the city provides and what we can and can't do.
Okay.
Right? And there seems to be this challenge sometimes where like, well, we don't want this, or we want this, or we don't want this. Like, let's just say how it works and let's figure out how we can work together and move forward.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know, in the first two years, we've done a lot.
We have.
We made transit free for kids.
Yes.
And for seniors.
Yeah.
And you and I, I think strongly believe that we need a complete transportation system in the city.
Yes.
That provides people options to get around.
Yes.
I don't want to force people out of their car.
No.
Right? But if we make the right investments in transit, then you know, you won't be the only one taking the bus to work.
Yeah.
Natalie does too. And I think most people don't know, but when Natalie got elected, she would be, I am a hundred percent sure the first counselor who doesn't own a car.
Yes.
Right? Like that's just wild. And that she takes my way all the, all the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so, yeah, you take it and she does, I've taken it, not as much as I probably should. But it's, it's a service that we know and understand as users, how much better it needs to be.
Yeah, no, and you know, the thing is too, I'm realizing just this week, like the target market that I speak to, taking transit, because I actually like transit, but I also like driving. Like I love.
You're a car guy.
I'm a car guy.
Yeah.
Like I have cars, like I just have one car. I have like, it's so like, it's one of those things where like.
You've got a fun car, I've seen you bring some cars to the car shows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's 86944.
There you go.
Porsche, so, and my Volkswagen, my GTI, and my wife's sport wagon, my kid's Jetta. So I have a, I have a stable of Volkswagens.
There's like an EV car meet coming up that I couldn't come to and you're like, hey, you should go.
Right.
And bring your EV. And I was like, I can't, but you should take it. And you're like, no, man, I'm strictly analog.
Yes, I declined to drive an EV, but I have an e-bike, I take the bus, I'll go for a walk. I mean, I'll contribute to the, to environment somewhere else, but not my car, sorry. That's my take on it.
You should try though, it's fun. It can get, I would go into sport mode, you can get, you get a lot of pickup on that thing.[1518.75]
I'll go to Formula One for my go-karts. Um, but that's the thing, like, I feel like for myself. That's the thing with Mississauga is missing. Like, how do we make transit attractive to a point where people prefer transit? Like, I did, I went on this whole transit thing at the beginning and like, uh, there weren't publicity stunts, but I wanted to take the transit to like region for inauguration and do those different things. And someone said, there's a difference between people who ride transit and people who rely on transit. I was like, fair, right? So I mean, so I'm by choice, I'm taking transit. Great. So how do we make it a choice for people? Like, I took I took the the bus to go to the airport one time for a flight and it wasn't as hard as you think, but like, there's nothing teaching people how to do that. You know what I mean? So how do we make it more attractive for people and for that small segment that has a car? That maybe likes driving, but would make it more convenient for them. That's different than what I'm speaking and advocating for, you know, for Medeville people or Aaron Mills people who rely on the bus and they're mad that the forty two is slow. And I'm, you know what I mean? So there's two target markets. One target market is to rely on and the the other target market is to ride on, right? So I'm the ride, Natalie is the rely. Right? So like, let me speak for these people cuz we we don't spend any airtime with these people. But I think that we're moving the needle when the people are actually choosing and preferring to use transit over their cars.
So going back a little bit to, you know, the the process, what we've learned in the last two years, one of the things that I think was. I don't know, maybe surprising is not the right word, but one of the things that kinda got me was when we started doing these motions. Introducing free transit for kids and and for seniors, um, you know, talking about street sports. Is that, you know, to your point about not being partisan, you just have to come up with the idea and put it forward. And then try get a coalition of your colleagues together. And I think that was one of the things that, I don't wanna say shocked me, but like was really interesting about the process. Is that, eh, no one tells you how to do it. Right? This is just, this is what the process is. There's no handbook. But if you've got a good idea and you want somebody to get going or somebody's lobbying you to do something. Write a motion, put it forward at City Hall. Talk to our colleagues. Try to get everybody on board. And then that's how it's done. That's how the sausage is made.
Yes, exactly.
Eh, but there's still, you know, I mean, we've had a lot of motions that we've put together and we put forward. I did the fourplex motion. It is interesting that I always feel that the inertia of the city is to keep the status quo. And that when we're trying to do, I don't know, some people like consider it too much. But you know, there's a lot of pushback to that. It was like, well, that's not how we do it here.
Yeah, there's there's the, that's not how we do it here. This person's on their own agenda. This person is, uh, you know, I mean, like. Whatever it is, like, the accusations spoken or unspoken kind of, you know, start to flow.
Yeah, often spoken, but uh, behind in camera.
Right? Yeah, so I mean, even forming coalitions, like I I don't really form coalitions or really lobby when things come forward. I do get a sense of and get a feel for what what the temperature is on it and sometimes it's like, maybe it's not the season for it. Other times, it's good to go through the exercise to have the conversation and then to see and you're pleasantly surprised by how the conversation goes. Uh, and that's that's good too, right? Like, I love when my friend of mine said, like, not every win is a victory and every loss is a defeat. You know, and that and that's it. Like, sometimes we have a great conversation, it gets shot down and then people talk about it for months and it comes back up. You know, so.
No, absolutely. That's really true. I think there were a couple of things that we advanced that didn't progress, but at least we talked about it. Right? The first time we we tried to get fourplexes passed, it didn't pass. And that got a lot of attention. We got national attention about it. We were one of the first cities trying to do it. And eventually that gained its own momentum and we were able to do that. But that made it easier for us to talk about more housing choices. Right? And so now the city's got tons of more housing choices than it did when we got here. And, you know, housing wasn't as hot button of an issue as it is now than when we got elected. But it feels like we've made a significant amount of progress on that, but there's still so much more to do.
There is. And at the same time that there is that much to do, it's interesting that those steps, they look like, well, that hasn't really materialized into anything. But if we didn't make that step.
We'd be so much.
We'd be so much further behind. And you know, Joe and I, Councilor Horneck and I were talking about this the other day that. Even though we're here for this one term, we're still making decisions for the next fifty years. And sometimes we get caught up in the decision we need to make now or what that looks like for this term, but like, we're making fifty year decisions. And that's kinda in my head. I'm making now decisions and I'm making fifty year decisions. And that was an example of a fifty year decision. Like, long after we're gone, it'll be like, well, I'm glad that, you know, that's happened because of this and someone might not even connect the dots to that motion in that moment in time. But if that never happens, like to start that process later would push everything back years.
How have you found, um, you know, working with residents on? I don't know, just things in general, because we can go specific on certain things because. I feel like the city is always at this position where we're in a position of conflict. Because people want things to be a certain way, but we also have a mandate to make progress on certain things, right? So you. Bikings is a good example, transit is a good example, housing is a good example where we know that we need to create a better transit system so that more people can choose it. We know we need to make a better, safer bike network so that more people are willing to use it. But you're also talking about people who like the way it is right now. And it's kind of like, well, this is better for you. And you know, it's like telling your kids to eat their vegetables, right? It's it's challenging to sort of say, I'm not, I don't wanna force you to do that, but I wanna give you the option to do that.
You know, I use that eat your vegetables analogy at the public information meeting for the Aqua Team Pilot Project and that did not go over well. So I'm just shelving the eat your vegetables analogy. Um. Um, my philosophy of late is the best storyteller wins. So if the storytelling is, this is the neighborhood study, this is the bike master plan, this is the da 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 da. People don't know that. They don't know that we're trying to subscribe to a master plan and adhere to it and make pivots where we need to. But those master plans. So I think if we're doing a better job of painting that master plan picture, then people understand that. They were collectively speaking, part of that master plan cuz we did, you know, we had information sets, they had opportunities to contribute to that. So then hopefully they'll be a part of that plan next time and they'll take pieces of that story. But, you know, for me, hyper locally speaking, the Aqua Team Pilot Project, the Road Safety Pilot Project is something that's contentious in my area. And as long as it's called a bike lane project, people get mad. But when I say it's a road safety project. Then they get paused cuz it's like, okay, well, the average speed was twenty two kilometers on that road before we did this road safety project. And there was no left turn center lane and people thank me all the time for that left turn center lane. So those are good things. Now, the bike lane on the road is problematic and those bollards are annoying. And I see pizza drivers using the bike lane to make a a left turn, a right turn. So yes, we have some problems there. So let's look at the boulevard or whatever the case is. So like, by the time we give them the whole story. Then it talks people off the ledge, but when they don't understand what the story is.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the challenge is the communications, right? I mean, people are so bombarded with so many things. We had a budget meeting before and we told, eh, in all the channels that we have available to the city. Right? They they called a hundred thousand phone numbers. Twice to tell them that it was going to happen and then that it was about to happen. We've sent emails, we do boards and things like that. Every resource that the city has to tell people that it was a budget meeting. We used. And when we had the budget meeting, we saw complaints come in saying, how did no one tell us this budget meeting was happening? Right? And so you're trying to engage them and involve them, but you're competing with Fox and friends. And uh, all the craziness that's happening around the world and just people being busy with their lives. And it's not that we're not trying to be transparent. We're trying to show them and get them engaged as much as possible, but it seems like we're always up against a fence.
And I spent at least two hours on social media on the day of the budget because my staff put up a reminder.
Yeah, I saw that.
And then the nasty grams, well, how come I'm just here about this now? Oh, thanks for telling us six hours before it starts. I'm like, it's a reminder. Is that the first time the city's announcing it?
Yeah, I I mean, I, we want people to be engaged. We have public consultations on everything. Maybe too much. I I think we have a couple of rounds. We wanna give people opportunity to provide their input, but at the end of the day, we also have to, you know, shit it, get off the pot and make a decision. Um, and if you disagree with that, well, then the next election is an opportunity to to fix that, right?
I pretty much never use that line, by the way.
And we maybe shouldn't and maybe we'll cut that out.
No, no, Sue uses it all the time. Like Sue's like, here's a hundred dollar bill, put your name down and run against me if you don't like what I'm saying. I love the way that she approaches that stuff.
She's very confident. She's also the only counselor for War Ten in the history of. The city of Mississauga. So, eh, you know, there's, again, that that incumbency is there and and she's done a lot of good for her community, right? So I mean, but that's what democratic elected representatives do, right? I mean. I don't think you should con- absolutely consult a hundred percent on every single decision. Right? Should I wear the red tie today or the blue tie today? Like, please tell me what to do. No, you you trust that, you know, we're gonna make the decisions in your best interest. And and that's that's what we wanna do. Right? And and I think we can make better progress where we acknowledge that we have that responsibility and we're not just going back every time. We have to make a hard decision.
So I I I have a question for you. Just off of that. So if someone came up to you today and said, hey, I wanna run for city council, what advice would you give them to get to your seat?
Oh, that's good. Uh, I would say a hundred percent, please run. First of all. And and this 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 happens, you know, on a fairly regular basis, people ask me about how to get involved in politics. They've seen me do it, right? And I would say, yes, run, make the decision to run. Cuz the hardest thing to decide is, yes, I'm going to run. And then understand and sit down to yourself to answer the question, why you wanna run. Right? Like, and be honest with yourself. You you like doing interviews, you 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 think it's gonna be something important.
I wanna pension.
I wanna pension. Um, or, you know, is there a specific issue that you really care about that you wanna fix? Like, what do you wanna do? That's always my second question to them. Like, one, do you really wanna do this? Two, why do you wanna do it? Right? If you can answer that question to yourself honestly and be confident that you're doing it for the right reasons, then go all in. Then go all in. There is no half-assing getting into politics. Right? Eh, people don't like politicians. Like, they're very low on the trust scale and they're like, oh, maybe it's not all politicians, but these ones I don't like. And I'm like, everybody, I think generally speaking, tries to get into this for the right reasons. We disagree on the policies of it. That's fine, but I try to give people the benefit of the doubt they're doing this for the right reasons. You have to give up the fact that you're gonna be remembered as Martin Reed when you run for politics. Because people will say, he's a politician. And they question everything you do from that point. You know, like, hey, I saw you needed help with your driveway. I'm gonna help you shovel your driveway to get you out. It's like, oh, is he doing that? So he'll vote for us, I'll vote for him. Like, no, man, I'm just trying to be a nice guy. Right? Like, you lose that sort of anonymity and you lose a lot of that intention behind it. Right? And people see you and like, after I ran for mayor, more people were recognizing me where I was. And I'd be at my son's baseball game and I could hear the other dugout talking about me. Guys, I'm right here. Just say hi. Shake my hand, you know, let's, you know, let's just have a conversation like normal people. But it's weird that people sort of create this new separation. And so if you're trying to decide if you're gonna get into politics, that's something you have to decide to do. But the reason I say don't half-ass it, it's hard. It's hard to get into. Right? Twenty people ran for mayor, only one person wins. You had a very competitive race because it was an open seat. Eleven people ran, you were the only one that won. Right? So in order to do that, you gotta be all in. I assume you were all in when you ran.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent. Uh, yeah, I was all in to a point where there's job opportunities that came up that I passed up cuz I was running. And people like, well, this guy's all in cuz like, that was a good job opportunity that I just. Yeah, no, that's meet some great points that I didn't wanna interrupt you. Uh, but it was funny that what during the campaign or prior to the Mero campaign. When you got me a birthday gift and someone like, some troll was just like, oh, he's buying his fellow counselors to get their votes for. It's like, no, it's a record. It's my birthday, man. Like, just like chill. Like, people were nasty.
It's so, I mean, like, eh, people don't know, I guess, the relationships we have behind the scenes cuz they only just see us. You know, around the council, around the council table, but, you know, we try to work out together. Before council. I mean, I'm really just trying to keep up with you. Most of the time. You've come over to my place for breakfast, but uh, you were super nice when we started working together. You got me a a bottle that we should probably drink after this. That uh, uh, for my birthday and then, you know, we talk a lot about, um, uh. Culture and community here in Mississauga. And when your birthday was coming up, I was just like, people don't know that, um, I'm sure forgetting his name.
Oscar Peterson?
People don't know that Oscar Peterson lived and grew up in my neighborhood, in the community that I represent. Right? And we have. Eh, he's like a world famous.
Like arguably the best jazz piano player of all time.
And I I knew you had a record player cuz we'd sit down in your office, we'd listen to some records here and there. And so I was just like, oh, it's Martin's birthday. What am I gonna get him? I know exactly what it's gonna be. Right? It's gonna be an Oscar Peterson album. Uh, I'm gonna go to the record store, I'm gonna get it. And then we listened to it and it was amazing. And then we saw the uh, the statue over in Ottawa. And we were like, how is this in Ottawa and not in Mississauga? Like, he's from here, he's one of the stories that we don't do a good enough job sharing to people.
We'll get him a statue.
Yeah, we gotta get, we gotta get some statues in the city.
His and and Sue has the school named after him in in his ward.
But like, there's a lot of interesting things about Mississauga that I think people don't realize, right? And we need to celebrate that more. So it's about that storytelling. But you're a great storyteller.
Thank you.
And I think this is really changing the way people look at municipal government, municipal issues. Community engagement. Um, and hopefully we've inspired some of our colleagues to do more of that too.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, no, that's good. I think that the key piece for me is being a good listener. You know, of all the pieces, when I was running a campaign, well, what do you have going for you? I was like, well, I don't have two degrees on my wall. And police side and stuff like that, but I'm a good, you know, I'm a listener, like in my background in counseling and people are gonna come with their issues and their concerns. Just listen. I don't have every answer, but people wanna feel heard, seen and valued. So if I could do that, I think we're gonna win in every one of these conversations.
Yeah, and if we can keep, you know, people in the heart of everything that we do. They will always come up with the right decision. People may not like it. Right away. But uh, we'll get them to eat their vegetables. All right. Thank you so much for coming on. This has been a lot of fun. Uh, looking forward to it again. That's our episode for today. Huge thanks to Martin Reed for coming and joining us today here on the podcast. You can follow him on social media at Reed Four Ward Nine. I'm your host, Alvin Tejo. Please visit alventejo.ca for any comments, questions or concerns. Let us know what you think and we'll see you next time.